Hammond City Council Public Hearing, February 27th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Councilman DiViterio, Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells, Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing number one in ordinance to accept final construction plans for the east portion of Commerce Street improvements, accept dedication of east portion of Commerce Street approximately 50 by 468 and cul-de-sac, and acceptance of one-year performance bond letter of credit in the amount of $287,935 in accordance with the survey, I'm sorry, with plans and survey of William J. Bowden Jr.'s own CH and RM3, recommended approval by the Planning Commission. Tracy Schalaci.
Hello, good evening, Council. We're asking you guys to do three things tonight, accept the final construction plans for the improvements of Commerce Street, and that is the east portion that is currently private. The front 300 feet of Commerce Street is publicly owned. Also asking you to accept the dedication of those improvements with the acceptance of the performance bond they're providing here tonight. This road currently is a dead end, it doesn't have a cul-de-sac, they'll be adding a cul-de-sac to facilitate fire trucks, ambulances, mail trucks. You have any questions?
Is anyone here on this matter in the audience? Questions from the council?
I do want to add one more thing.
Yes, please.
We'd like to add a condition to their approval. There's a piece of property at the end of the street that owed some previous taxes, and the developer has agreed to place a bond in lieu of paying those taxes, I believe, Andre, you?
Yeah, I think we, the agreement is the developer would satisfy the taxes, have that resolved, or otherwise post a bond to secure that.
Is it the developer's taxes?
No, no, it's one of the lot owners who's doing the dedication.
I see.
It was unpaid taxes on one of those lots.
Okay. Do we need to do anything specific in this?
No, just when it comes time for approval, just note with the condition of satisfaction of bond out of unpaid taxes.
And this will, in the future, once the improvements are done, the Planning Commission will review all the approvals from the water, sewer, drainage, all those people with as built, and we will bring that back to council and trade out of the bond from a performance bond to a two-year maintenance bond. So you'll see this again once all those inspections are done and the improvements are done.
Okay. All right, no one here on this matter? We'll move on to number two. An ordinance to revoke an existing 10-foot water servitude and accept the dedication of a relocated 10-foot water servitude requested by Palace Properties LLC located on Lot 3A1-A2 at Hammond Square Shopping Center in accordance with the survey by Acadia Land Surveying LLC. Tracy.
So there's a current 10-foot water servitude that the new Walk On's Restaurant needs to build across, so we need to move that water servitude, and that's what we're requesting to replicate the current one and accept the new one.
So there anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you. Thanks.
We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman DiViterio, Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
I'll ask you all to stand for our prayer, led by Councilman Andrews, and then followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we just thank you right now, giving you glory and honor to do your name. Father God, thank you that this is the day that you have made, we shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. Father God, we thank you according to your word, that you say that we should love our neighbor as ourselves. Father God, I ask you to continue to bless our police department, our fire department, and that continue to protect us and serve us in the street. Father God, I ask you to continue to bless our city administration, continue to bless the city council as we continue to lead our city. Father God, I thank you right now that you say in your word that everything we do tonight will be done decent and order and pleasing and in your sight, where you will get all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, because it all belongs to you. Without you, we are nothing, and we thank you for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move into our council reports. I'll report, I guess, since it's social media approved, that Councilman DiViterio's wife had a baby on Tuesday, so that is probably why he's not here. And so our congratulations go out to Marcy and Sam and baby Stella. And any other council reports?
March 14th, on March 14th, we'll have our first District One Neighborhood cleanup trash pickup on that day. We'll meet up like we always do over at Martin Luther King Park, and we'll go out into the neighborhood and pick up all trash and litter that we see, so we'll take care of that on March 14th. If you're free on that day, come out and be a part of what we're doing.
Steve, okay, okay. Devon, do you have anything? All right, Mayor?
However, busy night, but we have a special guest as well tonight, Mr. Ernest Andrews. Could you come up, sir? Also, if you would, Councilman Mr. Joseph, would you come up, and any veterans, would you please come up as well? Mr. Ernest, if you would, please tell everyone a little bit about what you're doing and what you're trying to do with the ship that you were on as well as getting rid of.
Well, I'm 96-year-old now, we're a two-veteran. We found a ship just like when I sailed on during the war in LST. We found it over on the Isle of Crete in the Greek Islands. We spent four months putting it all together and making it seaworthy, brought it back to the United States, and we have it here now. And I had heard about a guy running across the United, he was running across every country, and when he ran across the United States, I said, "Boy, that sounds like something fun to do." So at 90 years old, I started running across the United States from the Pacific to the Atlantic. I ran right through here and made it one day after my 93rd birthday. And then after a couple of years of getting bored, I decided to run back the other way. So that's what I'm doing now, I'll be running through here in a week or so, and heading for California.
And he's trying to raise the money in order to move the ship as well, right?
I was hoping to raise enough money to take the ship back to Normandy. It was at Normandy on D-Day. When it was going into Normandy, I was going into Saipan on its ship identical to this one. And I don't think I raised that much money, because it's going to take a lot. But I've raised a few thousands so far, and it at least helps people seaworthy.
Well, Mr. Ernest, on behalf of the City of Hammond and all the veterans, we'd like to present you with something. Since I'm not a veteran, as Mr. Joseph, if he would present you with the key to the City of Hammond, so thank you for your use.
I thank you very much. I appreciate it, guys. I sent it to you, and I'm going to start calling you now Superman. Oh, I thank you. Isn't that beautiful? Good job. Thank you very much.
You got it right, that idea, a lot good.
Thank you very much.
One of the members from Los Angeles, she had done his 100th birthday in San Diego.
Thank you. Wow. That's impressive. Makes me want to get out there and start running, huh? Got a lot of catching up to do. All right, now for any other council, or Mayor, you're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to our minutes of February 11th, 2020.
Make a motion that we accept our minutes from our February 11th, 2020 meeting.
Sure. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Old business nun, new business number one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation Development for taxiway lighting rehabilitation phase one design at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport for up to $150,000. David LaBeouf.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This goes back to our capital improvement plan. We've had it on there for a couple of years. I think we've spoken about it before. We've got some electrical and lighting problems at the airport. It's aging, and we've got buried cable and transformers and other things that need to be upgraded, signs that need to be upgraded. The total project is estimated, when we do get the funding from the FAA, for around a million and a half dollars. In the meantime, the state is funding 100% of the design of the project, and they're doing it in two phases, $150,000 this year and $150,000 next year. So this is the phase one, the first 150 of that.
Great. And no money from the city is required?
None is required, no.
Is anyone here on this matter? Question or comments from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Say.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a work authorization for professional services with Michael Baker International for airfield lighting rehabilitation phase one design at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport.
So now that you've funded, or approved the acceptance of the contract, the grant from the state, we'd like to award the work authorization to our consulting engineers, Michael Baker International, for that $150,000. This work authorization has been approved by the state, reviewed by the state, and approved by them, and they are the approved contractor for this project.
Anyone here on this matter? Question or comment from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number three, a resolution to approve change order number one, final for Northwest Railroad Sewer Improvements, in the amount of $3,364.60 credit. Chuck Spang.
This is all of our projects, the unit price contracts, this just happened to come in under the, he managed to do his directional boring without cutting out as much street and sidewalk as we initially anticipated. He set up fairly small bore pits and saved quite a bit of money on paving. The change order is, should it hyperlink, it looks like this, it's just simply itemizes the final quantities of each bid item, and we happen to be at the conclusion of the work, $3,364.60 under the original contract amount. So I would recommend approval of change order number one in that amount.
Is there anyone here on this matter? Any questions or comments from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to accept the work for Northwest Railroad Sewer Improvements by Lawson Bonet Construction Inc., as substantially complete, commencing the 45-day lean period and withholding 10% retainage.
Yes, ma'am, the work has been complete for about a month. The lift station is in service. I would like to compliment the city representatives from the steward department that helped do the electrical work, as this was a little bit of a different animal, because the electrical service is coming off a private service drop, we don't have any public electrical service there, and Janet and the rest of them did a great job of making this thing work out. Of course, we supplied, we, the contractor, supplied the control panel and the wire, but she actually made it hot and made it functional, so I appreciate their help. And the city probably saved about 10 grand by not having to allow an electrician to do this for the contractor. So in any event, I do recommend approval, or at least acceptance of the work as substantially complete, and that will commence the 45-day lean period, and we will withhold 10% retainage.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to approve budget change form 20-04, transferring $8,000 from Southwest Railroad Sewer Improvements to Pride Drive Heidi Sewer Extension. Chuck Spang.
Yes, ma'am. This is our underrun on the Northwest Railroad Sewer Improvements, and the fact that we ran into problems with the bore at Pride Drive under the railroad tracks, had to move it three times because there are obstructions under the tracks, that extended our sewer length by about 130 feet plus a manhole, so I'm asking the transfer. We may be able to save it when we get to the end of the job, but that rises up right now. I know we're going to run over slightly, and I'd like to transfer this into that fund in the event that does occur. So this is a, this is a straight change, no new appropriation.
Anyone here on this matter?
That's what the budget change form looks like. So in the column, change column is a zero change in total appropriation.
Right. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution to approve budget change form 20-03, transferring $303,900 from closed-out projects Drainage Improvements fiscal year 2018, and Drainage Improvements fiscal year 2019, to Sidewalk and Drainage Improvements fiscal year 2020.
Yes, ma'am, we have two closed-out projects, and they're on this form, which is 2005, it looks like this. Over the last couple of days, there've been a slight change to those numbers, but the bottom line is, we've had three years of appropriations, we did not do all those work in those previous two years. We're putting in this particular year's contract, we didn't have right-of-ways or some other reasons. And now we're going to put these all in this, and we've also added an additive alternate to do some drainage work on South Cypress from Mars South to a large outfall that we discovered down by Park Street, which will alleviate all the flooding, or most of the flooding that's occurring on South Cypress and East Mars. So I know you all heard complaints about that, but if we have the money left over when we bid the job, the additive alternate hopefully won't jump us too far out of this number. I do think it'll be higher than what we have, but we might get great bids. We got them last time, and we're way under budget, so hopefully that'll happen again. Anyway, this is a transfer of those previous year funds for the incomplete, the uncomplete, incomplete work, not-done work, into our FY 2020 drainage project. And I wrote a long letter, but I'm already being worried about it, it's about a three-page letter, got it about a month ago, and listed all of what we're doing. But it's a lot of sidewalks, Range, Covington, Washington Avenue, Phoenix Square, that's just drainage Phoenix Square, but there's a lot of different areas where we're doing work all over town, Brandy Lane, all over the, pretty much all over the city.
Anyone have questions on that?
Yes.
Come forward.
Before this money is closed out, I'd like to bring for, before the council, a project along South Chestnut, which had been pending for a number of years, and was done in the summer and early fall, just before you all became members of the council. For many years, at least nominally years, I reported regularly to this council a serious drainage issue on South Chestnut. Buddy Redstall would come out from time to time and dig out the ditch and relieve the water from our property, and it would, it would work for a couple of months, and then it would back up again. So we've had flooding for numbers of years. When the city budgeted a large project for us on Chestnut, they worked on the ditches from the canal south to Iowa Street. They installed culverts and concrete driveways for all the rental properties for two blocks, and it was very impressive and effective, but they stopped 100 feet from Iowa intersection instead of just finishing the whole street. I asked the engineer, when I realized they were stopping, they sort of built a dam at the beginning of my property, and he said that we didn't need any drainage. Now I have water standing in the ditch almost all the time, because we have rains often enough that before it dries up, it fills up again. There's about four inches of water along Chestnut Street, along my property, and it goes along Iowa Street because we have that east-to-south drainage, so I have no drainage along the property. I've had a wrecker to pull me out of the mud three times in the last 10 days since we've had mowing, because I've never been stuck in my yard before, and I've had to have stuck so badly, it's such a bog, that I've had to have a wrecker out. And I realize that the grant monies have been diverted elsewhere, but I implore this council to look into the situation and help us with this drainage issue, actually created by the project that the city did over a year ago. The $300,000 could finish the work they did and relieve the flooding that they created for us then.
What's the exact address on South Chestnut?
It's 610 Iowa, so it would be the 700 block of Chestnut, both sides of the street.
I'll go.
It's from Iowa, it's just our property, is all. They stopped at our property and said we didn't need the drainage.
Water hasn't entered any homes, has it?
No, but it will, it's, it's has never been under my.
Well, we're definitely working in that area.
It's never, we're raised, it's never been under my house before, but it is under my house now. And I can't, I mean, I can't even mow, I got stuck so badly, I had to have a wrecker.
Nobody can mow it now, actually.
Well, I used to could, could mow.
We're definitely checking.
Tried it. Thank you.
That is, that is in the next phase of your drainage on Chestnut, by the way.
Yes.
The portion she's talking about.
Right.
The portion before was not stopping it, I went about a half a block up to drain.
Please, did you hear that?
I'm listening, but I'm not fully understanding.
You said that is in the next phase.
It's in the next phase of the drainage on Chestnut, which is next year.
Then it's in next, next year's budget is all of Chestnut.
We have thousands of feet of problems. And I will say, I don't know what I won't say.
That's okay. Well, I didn't have a problem until.
No, I don't know if, I'd have to dispute that. I have a yard I can't walk in, and I'm an engineer, it's just that we've had 45 inches of rain in four months. Anybody's trying to cut their grass in this slop is asking for trouble. I won't say that there's not, that she doesn't have a problem, there is a problem in that ditch. We went right up to John's house, we crossed the road and caught the backyard of John's, and that wasn't in the contract, and that's as far as we went. I don't know who told you that we couldn't, it would never do any good, because I don't agree that it'll never do you good, but we will definitely fix it next year when we get this additional money.
I appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is number six. Anyone else regarding number six, the budget change form? Questions by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Chuck. Number seven, a resolution authorizing change order number one for the air traffic control tower build-out for an increase of $1,971. Charles Borshers.
Good evening.
Hi.
There was a copy of the change order attached to the agenda. Basically, we had a deduction of about $4,300 and identified two other areas. One, there's some plumbing work to be done to correct existing plumbing bring up to code, and then there was waterproofing of the elevator pit. That was something that the city would have had to do otherwise. We think it's affordable to have the contractor do it, since we have this deduction. The total cost, the city will be an additional $1,900 and change, and we've got about $20,000 in contingency in the budget for the project right now.
Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution, one, supporting the submission of $112,500 application to the Assistance for Fire, to firefighters grant program to purchase firefighting equipment for the Hammond Fire Department, and two, supporting a cash match of $12,500 from the Fire Millage Fund. Charles.
The Assistance Firefighters Grant is one of the larger funding opportunities for firefighting. What we're going to be doing this time with your approval is submitting an application to replace some older hoses and nozzles and valves, equipment that no longer meets current national standards. I think there's also going to be some additional hoses and valves and nozzles to supplement what we have, and there's also going to be some what are called fire monitors, which are basically, if you think of an apparatus for placing a hose sort of stationary closer to a fire, that maybe would be a risk for firefighters to fight. The match will come from the fire department. We've been in contact with the chief about this project, so.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution, one, supporting the submission of a five, sorry, $50,000 application to the AARP Community Challenge Grant Program to build an accessible walking trail in MLK Park, and supporting a cash match of $25,000 from the Grant Match Fund. Charles.
This one's fairly self-explanatory. The area that we're looking at, if you're looking at the pavilion in the center of the park, to the left of the pavilion, sort of going back behind it, wrapping around, so between the baseball field and the playground, there's a nice area there where we can easily accommodate a quarter mile to a third of a mile walking path. AARP likes these kind of projects, anything that can encourage our seniors and anyone in a wheelchair, give them an opportunity to get outside, do some exercise. I will say also, not directly connected to this, but we've got now an organization that will be using the Safe Haven for an after-school STEM camp, so there'll be an opportunity for them, if they stick around, to have this outdoor activity.
Has somebody looked at this, put in the sidewalk, to where we're not going to create a dam with drainage or water flow, and all we got?
This is very conceptual at this point, but certainly if we were awarded the grant, we would have it designed so that all of those issues would be resolved, or at least we wouldn't be contributing to those issues.
Okay. Anyone here on this matter? Martin Luther King. All right, pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 10, a resolution, number one, supporting the submission of a $250,000 grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund for improvements to Mooney Park, and two, supporting a cash match of $250,000 from the Grant Match Fund. Charles.
This is a great opportunity, I think I've spoken to some of you council members about in the past. The most recent project to be funded by Land and Water Conservation was, was the pool, portion of the pool was funded by this. It's a grant of up to $250,000 with a match of up to $250,000 for a total of a $500,000 project. This is one of the reasons we have the Grant Match Fund, so we can kind of build up our matching ability and participate in these larger grant opportunities. Mooney Park is one of our parks that we haven't done a lot in, in a number of years. I think the last major improvements in that park were the playground. We've been working closely with Councilman Wells on a concept to redesign that park and really make it more in line with some of the improvements we made in other parks. So it'll have a walking trail, you know, a new basketball court, parking, a new playground, other amenities, restrooms, et cetera.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Yes.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 11, a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Charles. 11, a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Tancho Parish Government for road overlays on West Dakota Street, North Oak Street, Northwest Railroad Avenue, Mooney Avenue, Muscarella Road, Third Street, East Hanson Street, Maryland Street, and Professional Plaza. Please, Andrew.
This is a standard contract that we enter into with the parish to overlay at the parish's cost, not at the city's cost, several streets within the city of Hammond, and so those streets are listed there. The contract is attached, and it also includes details about the beginning and end point of each of those segments of roadway.
Thank you. And Council, Councilman Louis Joseph over there?
Yeah.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption ordinance, number one, final adoption ordinance to accept final construction plans for the east portion of Commerce Street improvements, accept dedication of east portion of Commerce Street and cul-de-sac, and accept, and acceptance of a one-year performance bond, letter of credit in the amount of $287,935, in accordance with the plans and survey of William J. Bowden Jr., Zoned CH and RM3. Recommend approval by Planning Commission. I would like to, we have to vote on an amendment?
Well, I think when you make the motion, just include the condition that the developer satisfy or bond out the unpaid taxes.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt this with the condition of a satisfaction of.
Or bonding of the unpaid taxes.
Or bonding of unpaid property taxes.
Make a motion to accept.
Just a second. That was a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Andrews.
My second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.[1753.42]